I call this meeting to order. I'm going to have Councilwoman Cook lead us in prayer and Councilwoman Nockan lead us in pledge.
Heavenly Father, we gather here today intent on doing good work. Please give us the patience, the wisdom, and the knowledge to make the best decisions that we can make for the betterment of our community. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, fellow council members. We welcome you to the city council meeting. As presiding officer and chair, I'd like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistance is available if needed. Items for submission to the council should be handed to Council Clerk Veronica L. Williams, seated to my left. When addressing the council, please state your name and title for the official record. The three-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all cell phones or electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolution, not Robert's Rules of Order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement on boards and commissions. If interested, call 291-8800. Chair announcements. Item number 14, CO0402021, intro ordinance, DuYong Road Annexation, is requesting amendment to correct the council district number in both the title and in section two from District Four to District Two. I don't have any announcements. Councilwoman Lazard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to announce that the Lafayette Science Museum will be reopening this Saturday, so I'm going to read a press release from Kevin Krantz, the director. After being closed for more than a year, the Lafayette Science Museum is reopening this Saturday, April 10th. The new hours of operation are Saturdays from 10:00 to 6:00, and Sundays from 1:00 to 6:00. Some of those hours are going to be probably adjusted after school closes and the summer arrives. The entire museum will be open to the public, including the planetarium. Face masks are required for entry, and masks will be provided for those patrons without one. Seats in the planetarium are limited, and guests will be admitted to the planetarium on a first-come, first-served basis. "We are thrilled to reopen, and there will be mammoth-sized surprise to greet our guests as they arrive," said Kevin Krantz. He added, "We have also taken every precaution to ensure a safe return for all our visitors. We have missed our science community, and we look forward to seeing you all." Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm not seeing any other council announcements.
Madam Chair, I may...
You still have the floor. It's up to you.
Yeah. I know we have a Parks and Rec item for final resolution.
Okay.
And I just had some brief questions for the director.
Can we wait until we get to that item?
Yeah, that's what I...
Perfect. Let's do that.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Can you X out of your screen, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the executive mayor's report. Mayor?
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members, audience. Thank you so much to our constituents that take the time to be with us. We always appreciate that. We have nothing to offer to the council tonight except our budget to actual comparison of major city funds, February 2021 preliminary. If you have any questions, Director Toupes is behind me. Not seeing any? I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Not seeing anything? Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Moving on to resolutions. This is a public hearing, and the speaker forms are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Cindy, will you please read?
City Resolution 4, 2021, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council granting a waiver of an exemption from the requirements of Section 6-36A1 of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances relative to the holding of an alcohol beverage license at the premises of JAJJ Enterprises LLC, Vero Express Establishment, to be operated at 2927 Vero School Road in the City of Lafayette, Louisiana.
Can I get a motion? Oh, I'm so sorry. Can I get a motion in a second? A motion by Nockan, second by Lazard. Council discussion. Mr. Lazard, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, this is the first time since I've been on the council that one of these have come before us.
Sure.
And if I could just get a brief explanation from someone as to the process and what have you?
Sure, absolutely. Sidra, is there... Okay, Ms. Sally, do you want to bring up Ms. Sally? Okay.
Introduce yourself, Sally.
And both mics are hot. Ms. Sally, introduce yourself, please.
I'm Sally LaJia. I'm the manager with Alcohol and Noise Control. The waiver of the distance requirement that's before you is the ordinance states that they have to be 175 feet from a church or 300 feet from a school, playground, library, things like that. This one is less than 175 feet from a church, which is why it's been brought to you to approve. It's for a convenience store.
Okay, so the process is the person makes the application. I'm assuming that some kind of notice is given to the church or playground or school or whatever the case may be.
Correct. Whoever the property owner is, notification is sent out via certified return receipt for that business. So it went to the church, they were notified of the waiver being requested.
Have we received any response from...
Well, they were notified of the date today, so if they had any objections to it, they would be here to voice their opinion. And to my knowledge, the church does not have any objections to this request.
Typically, you would definitely know. They typically show up and email and have concerns. We've had that in the past, just so you know.
They have notified more.
Yeah. I was just...
All good. All good.
So the agency's position is, does the agency take a position on it?
We're recommending approval for it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This is my district, and I did receive a call just questioning this. From what I understood, you and I spoke... Yes, ma'am. This was a convenience store at one point in time before, correct? Or it is a convenience?
Approximately four years ago it was, and then it closed.
Okay.
And this is to reopen.
To reopen, and did they sell alcohol before?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I guess when my red flag went up, I thought it was a bar. I mean, like just selling liquor, but it's a store, kind of like a...
It's a grocery store for off-premise consumption only.
Okay, so yeah, and it's not for not on-premise consumption. So that made the difference with this particular constituent that I was concerned about. So I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that that was just a store selling alcohol, it's not a bar.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not seeing anything else. Thank you, Ms. Sally. Appreciate it. Got to bring your liquor home, people. All right. Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yeah.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Ordinance is for a final adoption. This is a public hearing, and speaker forms are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply.
City Ordinance 352021, in order of the Lafayette City Council approving the lease of the George Dupree Recreation Center for certain hours of the day and authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with the Lafayette Charter Foundation.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Motion by Nockan, second by Cook. Council discussion? I'm not... I'm sorry. I went too fast. Councilman Nockan, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm very happy to see this moving forward and to see good use made of the George Dupree Center. And I'm also very satisfied with the contract and the fact that there seems a very equitable split in the expense of utilities and janitorial services. And also the provision that's in there to balance the utilities at least once a year to make sure that you're not overpaying or we're not undercharging. I think that's very equitable. But anyway, I wish you guys luck. I hope this moves forward, and you have my support on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
So my question didn't have to do with this.
Okay.
But it had to do with Parks and Rec, so...
Okay, well, then just X out when we get to that one. Just buzz in. Just X out on the screen, please.
That's where I should begin.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any council questions. Did you sign in to speak?
Yes, ma'am. They did sign in to speak. So, but they signed in individually, so we'll give them their three minutes when...
Oh, you popped up on me. Okay, sorry. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
My point is that until I realize that you guys signed in to speak, because I'm sure you have all the support already. So maybe y'all want to speak, that's fine, but you guys have the support.
So you're done, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
All right. Public comment, Veronica?
Yes, we do have citizens signed in to speak. We did have two citizens who did not wish to speak, who signed in to support the ordinance. Two citizens signed in to speak. Garrett McGoffin is the first speaker, and he will be followed by Dr. Mary Luella Cook.
All right, Mr. Wallace, since you're up, ladies first.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor President, Councilman. I'm Dr. Luella Rix Cook. I am the president of the Lafayette Charter Foundation, and my heart is filled or flowing because of the support that you all are showing, not for Lafayette Charter Foundation, but for the children of this parish. If you have any questions, since we don't have to speak, I am elated with that, and I'll turn it over to our attorney, McGoffin.
Gary McGoffin, I appreciate the positive responses we've received. I do have a request if we are successful in obtaining this approval tonight. We've received notice that we need to get a copy of the signed lease to the Department of Education by noon tomorrow. It has to do with an approval process for the Board of Elementary/Secondary Education, so I'm just asking if that might be possible for us to do.
We're checking on that right now.
Okay. And with that, I'll stand by. Thank you very much.
Sure, no problem. You're going to... We're just going to consider that a request while they work on it over there. Is that it for public comment?
That completes the comments.
All right, then let's go to a vote, please.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 36...
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think what they're going to want to do too, and you can get with Mr. McGoffin, I'll sign the ordinance in the morning, but they need it turned over rather quickly. I don't know if you'll be in the office, but you can get with him on it.
Hold on, Mayor. Let me turn on your mic real quick. There you go.
I was so eager to join in the council's praise of this operation. We're very appreciative of what you're offering to our community, and this is a great deal. We do have a copy that I can sign. I don't know, Madam Clerk, is it more appropriate for me to sign the cover sheet then sign the lease, or would you approve?
You can sign the lease now. You can sign that, but the ordinance and the disposition sheet is not ready yet. So, but we'll get that ready for you first thing in the morning, and we'll get it to your office.
Perfect. And Madam Chair, if you'll indulge me just for 30 more seconds. Mr. McGoffin, would you like me to sign a letter-size lease, or would you... Okay, I'll sign it right now.
Thank you. Is that all, Mayor?
Yes.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. All right, we voted. Let's move on. Cindy, please read.
City Ordinance 362021, in order of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into an entity-state agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for H014579 FYA Signal Improvements.
I have a motion by Cook, second by Nockan. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any. Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go. Let's go to a vote.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 372021, in order of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a contract with City of Lafayette Aquatics Incorporated relative to the operation and maintenance of the Earl J. Chris Pool at the Robisho Center.
I have a motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Council discussion? Is this the one you had a question about?
It was about Parks and Rec in general, and that's why I was asking what would have been the most appropriate place to... At the beginning of the meeting.
I tell you what, this is the only one, I believe, for Parks and Rec, so let's do that, but to...
It's going to be very...
Okay, perfect. I do see CAO has buzzed in. Will you buzz in, please? Thank you. All right, go ahead, Sidra.
No, I'm trying to respond.
Okay, I'm going to just make all of y'all's mics.
Questions. And we do have three speakers, Madam Chair. We do have three speakers.
We do have three speakers.
Let's do the speakers first.
Okay. Let's go to the speakers first.
The first of three speakers is Sarah Landrino, and she will be followed by Colleen Barcock. I'm sorry if I'm not saying it correctly. And I see that Jennifer Sims is coming up as well. So they all three signed in. I don't know if they have one speaker or whatnot.
Hi. You want to go first? You want to go first? Okay. My name is Sarah Landrino, and I work with the City of Lafayette Aquatics, and we're really excited. Oh, thank you. We're really excited about the opportunity to be able to partner with the city for the Robisho Center, the Earl J. Chris Pool. The goal of our program has always been to reach people and children of all ages and levels and to spread the awareness of swimming and water safety in our community, and we're excited about this partnership and our ability to be able to do that and keep expanding on it. We have a water safety campaign at Cola that we've been partnering with the city for several years to put on, where we go into schools and we spread water safety awareness, and we have a Water Safety Awareness Day. And through that, we also have a program called Sal's Summer of Swim, where we offer free swim lessons to underprivileged children, and we're really looking forward to expanding that. This will be our third summer to offer it, and two summers... The first summer, we had around 100 kids receive free swim lessons. The second summer, we were able to expand to over 200 kids, and we also expanded to offering it to the Robisho Center camp's individuals, were able to come and participate. And so we're really excited to be able to expand that program. We offer, and we're also looking to expand swim lessons in our community in general through a swim school. We also, you know, and our whole goal through the whole thing is just to reduce drowning and spread water safety awareness. Also, we're looking forward to keeping in place programs that are already there, like lap swim, and we, you know, look to grow the lap swim and to also make it more accessible and provide more opportunities for adults to have lap swim and to have swim lessons and also to have their water aerobics classes and just really open that up a little bit more for the community. So we're hoping that through this partnership, we can do all those things, and we can also kind of make a model to moving forward, be able to use at other pools and centers in Lafayette.
My name's Colleen Barcheck, and I'm actually the owner of City of Lafayette Aquatics. And Sarah really spoke to what we're really all about. We're really all about. We've been that way from the beginning. And so far, we've done a great job. We've partnered with the city with the high school league, which has about 700 swimmers, which pulls in from areas of Vinson and Elick and actually all the way from Homa. I was the general chair of Louisiana Swimming, and unfortunately, Louisiana is short on pools. So this is really important to us because we've seen what high school swimming can do for kids. We also run a middle school league with the city as well, and that started with maybe five kids, and now we have over 200. The team has been around for about 20 years, and we put over 30 to 35 kids in swimming in schools for college swimming, and that's really important to me. But bigger than that, I think a lot of people that have come through our program have become active in aquatics. They've become active in swimming, and it's not just a lifetime sport, it's actually a life-saving sport. We have a lot of kids that might just come swim high school with us or just come swim and take lessons with us. But what winds up happening is they become advocates for our sport and advocates for swimming, and that saves a lot of lives. We've... Swimming's a big community. I can't wait till we're all back in the water. It's a big community because I look at Jennifer Sims, and I actually coached her child's swimming for Westminster a really long time ago. It was about 15 years ago, and so swimming's a community, and I think it's really great that we're all working together to keep it going. So thank you for the opportunity.
My name is Jennifer Sims, and I actually own a company, Destiny Camp International, and I'm here to support this transaction together that they will work, and I will work with them to make it possible that we keep swimming going on and making sure that our young people... This is, for me, it's a life skill. It's not saving, it's a life skill because the discipline involved, the dangers and all of that, that's important with water safety. And I'm very happy that we are reaching out into the minority community of people of color because that's where the statistical numbers are. 64% of African-American people do not know how to swim. Those numbers have came down compared to when I started, and so I am asking the council to support this particular item, and I am in support of it and will work with them to see it go forth in the community.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
And Ms. Sims does a wonderful job. She worked with the kids, and like she said, it's a life skill. It's not about swimming and fun because when you fall in, you need to be able to come out of the water. So she starts from the kids, the beginners. She even helped me with lap swims for triathlons. So she goes, it could be adults, any age. She's very good at what she does, so I commend her.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. And if you don't mind sending all those dates for all the camps and all the promotions, please send that to Veronica Williams so we could share it with our constituents. Thank you. Were there...
No other speakers.
All right, perfect. We do have some discussion here. Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
I'd like to call up... Well, he knows. Perfect statement there about swimming. First of all, I want to thank Cola for what you do, and especially the swimming lessons for underprivileged children. And I'm not going to recite the stats. Ms. Sims already know what they are. Hollis, are there any plans... So now we're talking about access. Are there any plans to open up either the Martin Luther King Pool or the O.J. Mouton Pool this summer?
Okay, Hollis Conway, Director of Community Development, Acting Director of Parks and Recreation. We are currently in talks to open one or both of them right now, and we also are in talks with the idea of addressing the O.J. Mouton Pool. Our hopes is that eventually we will have all of the pools open. O.J. Mouton will take a little bit more time, but I'm very confident that we can have either one or both of King and Gerard Parks open this summer.
What kind of projected timeframe are we looking at?
Well, we hope to have them open for the summer. I know Mrs. Sims, Dr. Sims and I are planning to meet as soon as possible because we also... We can't just open a pool. We have to talk about programming, staffing, and all of those things. But the hope is that we can have something ready once summer kicks in. I'm pretty confident that we're going to have one or both of those pools open.
Okay. What about summer recreation programs in general? Can you get us some kind of status update as to what programs might be available at what facilities and what have you? Because I'm getting a lot of requests for that information from my constituents.
So are we, and I appreciate your concern. So as of right now, we have none scheduled, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to. So we're going to work very hard with our community. As you saw, these wonderful ladies that we're so appreciative for in your entire program, there's more of this greatness out here in our community. We just have to continue to tap into it. Whenever people say, "Do more with less," a lot of times the focus is on the less part, you know, do it less. But really, as you see with this program with Cola, we're doing more. You heard all the programs that they're offering. You heard all the initiatives that they're taking. That's doing more. The less part comes, the taxpayers are actually saving over $100,000 this year. Last year, when we went through budget, it was painful. We had to make some decisions that may have, should have, perhaps could have been made before we got here. Whatever, we're here. But we had to put ourselves on a fiscal solid foundation so that we can bring in Cola, so that we can bring in ACTA for tennis, so that we can work with our golf pros. There are other partnerships out there. In full candor, we haven't found it, but we're looking for it. So if we can, and I welcome the council, especially if you're getting a lot of calls from your district councilman, you know, bring us some ideas. If you hear of a potential partnership, we're open to anything. I am very confident in our other partnership we have with KPMG that the council approved. We're getting a lot of ideas. I know Director Conway has been working with him a lot. We started with his department for a reason, to be able to find these initiatives. So as of right now, in 100% candor, we don't have any scheduled, but we're still looking, and we're open to it. I know the CAO has been working with LDH and hearing their concerns and regarding the COVID considerations, but I'd like for us to find a way. You'd like for us to find a way, and I know everybody here would like for us to find a way, and we're committed to that.
Very... First of all, all of the partnerships that we've established to this point are obviously good ideas, obviously. Nobody questions that. But even going back to last year, Mayor, and I have to tell you that I'm very deeply concerned, because the impression that the community is getting is that the administration has made the decision that we are not going to invest in, or we're going to limit our investment in recreation as much as we can absent private contributions or public-private partnerships. And one of the things that has traditionally made Lafayette stand out above a lot of other communities has been just that, having a grade-A recreation program.
They should have, Councilman. When you're subsidizing out of your savings account, $3.5 million a year, you should have a grade-A program.
And I'm not saying we should do it to that extent.
Correct.
But the only thing I'm saying is that, especially when we talk about activities being offered to underprivileged kids that may not have access to some of the other facilities or programs, it's just my opinion that it's, you know... And we had that discussion last year, and we came to an agreement after going back and forth. We came to an agreement as to what the investment of the city should be, and I'm assuming we stuck to that. But like I said, but the fact that here we are talking about not having any kind of scheduled or programmed summer recreation programs, and if we're talking about because of COVID, that's fully understandable, fully understandable. But if we're talking about not having any because of quote-unquote "lack of funding," then that's a whole nother story altogether.
Can I jump in, Mr. Mayor?
And that, and that's very, you know.
So, loving the dialogue, but let's stick to what we're voting on here tonight, just out of respect for everyone in the audience who's here. Let's maybe have this, let's table this for another?
10 seconds, if I may, Madam Chair.
Let's wrap it up.
Sure.
So we can vote on this issue.
We meet twice a month. If you're having that much dialogue with your constituents, I welcome your phone call. You don't have to wait till a microphone to express it.
Okay, stopping it.
No, and just evolved into that based on your response.
I'm welcoming it.
All right, we're voting on this issue. Public comment, any other public comment? We have, Councilman Lazard, do you have any more questions about this specific ordinance? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Thank you. I wanna positive note here.
Thank you.
Aside from the conversation, I just wanna thank you ladies for everything you do for our community. I've had the pleasure of working with some of these over the last couple of years. Sarah would come to school to talk to our kids about safety, and we are so lucky to have them in our community, to be doing this education for our students, and I think this is a great fit, and I think as far as, to your conversation, you know, yes, I think we need to still have investment in our Parks and Rec Department. But if we can do it with partnerships like this, and make it even stronger, and reach a bigger reach, I think, you know, this is what we need to be doing at this point. And again, thank you so much, I'm so happy that we're doing this partnership with y'all, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Lewis, you have the floor. Yep, you should be on, yes, sir.
Okay. You can stay where you are, Mr. Hollis. You remember last week, I called you concerned about the MLK, if we was going to open it up and what have you, and I told you I knew someone that wanted to teach swimming lessons, that's Ms. Jennifer right there.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's her, that's the lady right there. At the time, I didn't know, I knew her, but I couldn't remember her name, and at the time when I met her, she wasn't a doctor, so now she has a doctorate degree. I think she's reading her iPhone, she might not be listening to what I'm saying. Hello?
Oh, my gosh.
But again, I appreciate that, what's going on, and again, that's who I was speaking about, her. So I'm glad she's on board, and I'm glad you guys are coming to the center here at Mouton Pool, and perhaps y'all might come to MLK one day. And again, I must say, I have to say, I cannot, I have to say this, by all means, please, what I also talked to you about, look at that pool, look at it, it's filthy, it really is, so we need it really cleaned up. If you don't open it up this year, but at least cleaning up the locker rooms and what have, it's really, really in terrible conditions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Public comment, we went through that, everybody's spoken, okay, then let's go to a vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Joint Ordinance is for final adoption, this is a public hearing, speaker forums are available for anyone wishing to address the council, the three-minute rule does apply.
Joint Ordinance 132021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council declaring the Safe Roots to School Project H-006538 a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary rights of way, immovable property, and other property rights requested to the construction of said project, either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary.
Can I get a motion and a second? I have a motion by Lazard, second by Nakhan. Any council discussion? I'm not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance 142021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute the attached franchise agreement with Conterra Ultra Broadband LLC authorizing the occupancy of the rights of way of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government in accordance with the terms and conditions of the agreement.
Can I get a motion and a second?
Second.
Can I get, well, I was gonna say, I have a motion by Nakhan, second by Cook. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Consideration for appointment by the council as a whole for boards and commissions. Cindy, will you please read?
Appointment to the Downtown Development Authority for a three-year term effective March 1st, 2021. This appointment is made from a nomination list applied by Downtown Lafayette Unlimited.
The resume received for consideration is from Miles Mott, he is the incumbent. Ms. Cook?
I'd like to nominate Miles Mott.
All right, council discussion? I have a second for that. Public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Miles Mott is appointed.
Before we move on.
Mr. Nakhan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to bring this up early, and I slip my mind when you get old. I just wanted to congratulate and thank the Lafayette Utility Service. They received another award, another commendation, for the excellent work they did with the winter storm Muri that came through, and the effort they put in to help our communities around us that were devastated. We were lucky here. We had some damage, but they really stepped up the plate as usual, and that weather was horrible. I was watching people walk around on slick icy streets trying to get services set up, and they stepped up and traveled to other areas of the state and really assisted, and I just wanna thank all of LUS and all the work they do in Public Works, the signs they put up, the roadblocks they put to make our roads safe, and thank you to the people who adhere to those necessities that were necessary for the safety of all the citizens of this area, but thank you guys very much.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to introductory ordinances, I wanna remind everyone that Item 14 has been pulled for separate vote and discussion. I'm asking for a motion and a second from the council to introduce ordinances 12, 13, 15 through 22 in Globo. Can I get a motion and a second? I have a motion by Lazard, second by Nakhan. Cindy, will you please read?
City ordinance 382021, in order to the Lafayette City Council approving a conditional use permit to allow a dwelling two-family duplex in a residential single-family zoning district, case number 0N20210007. 111 Annette Street, conditional use permit located generally north of Souvenir Gate, west of St. Joseph Street, and south of Conger Street. City ordinance 392021, in order to the Lafayette City Council, meaning the Lafayette Development Code, so as to reclassify case number 0N20210009, 338, 340, and 342 Crestlon Drive, 601, 603, and 605 Rosedown Lane Administrative Rezoning located generally south of Crestlon Drive, north of Rosedown Lane, and west of Blue Rose Lane. The particular parcels being rezoned from commercial heavy to residential single-family. City ordinance 412021, in order to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments of revenue and appropriation estimates. City ordinance 422021, in order to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $45,000 from Bridge Repair City and $15,000 from Hospital Drive Gerard Park Roundabout to the Adaptive Traffic Signal Control MTC project within the Traffic Roads and Bridges Department. City ordinance 432021, in order to the Lafayette City Council declaring the River Oaks property detention project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary rights of way, immovable property, and other property rights requested to the construction of said project, either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary. City ordinance 442021, in order to the Lafayette City Council declaring the Sea Meadow Brook Property Detention Project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary rights of way, immovable property, and other property rights requested to the construction of said project, either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary. City ordinance 452021, in order to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and adjusting the manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by deleting one plan or one position and adding one assistant transit supervisor position in the Public Works Department Transit Operations. City ordinance 462021, in order to the Lafayette City Council, amending and reenacting Section 94-119 of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances regarding electric private security lighting rates. City ordinance 472021, in order to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 capital improvements budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the Utilities Department for the Commission Boulevard Water Project. City ordinance 482021, in order to the Lafayette City Council providing for the abandonment of a 10-foot-by-10-foot utility niche on Lot 26A of Cottage on the Green subdivision located at 106 Cornery Drive.
All right, calling for council discussion. Not seeing any on those items, we read in Globo. Do we have any public comments for those items?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote to introduce in Globo Items 12, 13, and 15 through 22.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
The motion to introduce in Globo is approved.
Cindy, will you please read number 14?
City ordinance 402021, in order to the Lafayette City Council, amending the Lafayette Development Code and the official map of the City of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the City of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number 0N2020018, 234 Duion Road Annexation located generally north of Duion Road, east of Rue de Billier, and south of Town Center Parkway, and assigning a zoning classification of commercial mix, District Four.
Can I have a motion and a second? A motion by Cook, second by Nakhan. I remind everyone that the author requested an amendment to correct the council district number in both the title and section two, from District Four to District Two. I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second for the proposed amendment. Motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Council discussion on the amendment? I'm not seeing any. Ms. Williams, any public comment on that amendment?
No, ma'am.
All right, go to a vote on the amendment.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
The motion to amend is approved.
All right, council discussion on the ordinance as amended? I'm not seeing anything. Any public comments, public comment on the introduced ordinance as amended?
No, ma'am.
All right, then let's go to a vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
The motion to adopt as amended is approved.
Joint introductory ordinances, I'm asking for a motion and a second from council to introduce in Globo 24 through 26. I have a motion by Cook, a second by Nakhan. Cindy, will you please read?
Joint Ordinance 152021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments of revenue and appropriation estimates. Joint Ordinance 162021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, authorizing the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to sell at public internet auction surplus miscellaneous movable property which are no longer needed for public purposes as per the attached list internet auction. Joint Ordinance 172021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, amending the operating budget and the capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of fund balance in Fund 702 Central Vehicle Maintenance Fund in the amount of $11,000, and appropriating within the Public Works Department Vehicle Maintenance Division to replace an alignment machine.
I'm not seeing any council discussion, do I have any?